City Council meeting of June 27th, 2022. Mr. Franciac, would you call the meeting to order?
Mr. Carter. Mr. Young.
Present.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Heebick.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Yes, I'd like to excuse Mr. Carter from the meeting tonight.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. McDougal to excuse Mr. Carter for tonight's meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Please join me in the pledge. Okay, a couple of quick announcements. We're on to item three, announcements and committee reports. Couple of announcements from me. I'm afraid they won't necessarily be quick. But the COVID, quick COVID report, cases continue to go up. The good news is hospitalizations have decreased and Island Hospital maintains zero COVID patients as of the 20th, as of today. So also, I wanted to point out a number of road projects because this is kind of the season where we get to try to upgrade our, our infrastructure because of the nicer weather. Thirty Second and M is still on track. The contractors are supposed to be finished the 17th of July. Right now everything seems to be on track there. That's the Thirty Second and M Roundabout. There's going to be some work happening this Thursday and Friday on Thirty Seventh Street, Whistle and O Avenue. It's in prep of doing some Cape Seal work, so be aware of that. And then the one last thing, Gueimas Island every six years does an overlay project. And so what that means for, for some of us here in Anacortes is a lot of heavy trucks bringing material on the Gueimas ferry. And that's going to be during normal working hours, Monday through Thursday over the next three or four weeks, I think. So just be aware of that. And then finally, gonna talk about Fourth of July scheduled events. That will be on the Fourth, that's this Monday. 10:00 AM Town Photo, Fifth and Commercial. 10:15 Patriotic Program. 11:00 AM, the parade starts at Third and Commercial. 5:00 PM Rock the Dock starts at Seafarers Memorial Park. Dusk is when we will have our fireworks show. And again, encourage you all to, I know we sent out in our, in our bills an opportunity to donate to the, our fireworks display, but appreciate all the support we get there. And then lastly, just a reminder that fireworks are prohibited within the city limits, and that's been the case since 2004. So that's it for some announcements from me. And over to council with 3A Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. We, the HACs committee didn't have its ordinary Thursday morning meeting this week. In lieu of that, we had a meeting at the senior center that we publicized and had some members of the community attend. And Mr. Walters presented the report in the PowerPoint we had given to council in January, to council and the public with some verbal updates because some things have changed. And so that was, that was very positive. It was great to be able to reach some more people with the work that we're, we're doing as a, as a council and as a committee. And that was it for that, but I could segue into planning committee report.
Okay, please do.
Okay, thank you. We met just prior to this meeting, the three of us, Mr. Walters, Ms. Cleland McGrath, myself, and Planning Director Meesmer, and we talked about fire station number one and the possibility of an additional, an addition being built on to house and display our antique fire truck. So that's a conversation that's, that's starting, and we'll have more information on that in a little bit here. We talked about the cinema being purchased by the Anacortes Arts Festival, and that hasn't closed yet. There are some technical things going on there, so there's been a, an extension of that timeframe. And we will be hearing more from the Arts Festival of their intentions and their plans of what they would like to do with that space. They have some really great ideas, and they will be coming to council and the public with those. We talked about the critical areas ordinance, and staff is still working on streams and the regulations related to that to get us in compliance with best available science at the, at the command of the growth management hearings board. So there's work being done on the buffers, the riparian management zones is what they'll be called now instead of stream buffers. So there, that's, that's ongoing, but staff's been working hard on that to make sure we're in compliance. And there will be a public hearing on that on July 20th. Prior to that, on the 13th, council will have a first reading of those updates to the critical areas ordinance, so stay tuned for that. We had a brief discussion about temporary commercial signs and their number that's allowed per business and also the timeframe for those. So that's, that's going to be coming forward as that conversation continues. We have the R4 bonus height discussion tonight on the agenda, so I won't say anymore about that. But we do have our housing action plan that's underway, and the survey is, has just come out. Citizens will see that printed in their utility bills. It's been sent out to the email list of everyone who's, asks for Planning Department emails. It's on this, on the City of Anacortes website, on the Planning Department page. So we're encouraging everyone to fill out that survey and send it to us because this will help inform our planning for housing, which we obviously know we need, we have an, almost, we have an emergency here. So any, any input from the public is, is very welcome and encouraged. And lastly, we'll be seeing soon, July 11th, we'll be talking about floodplain management at City Council, and the daycare two interim regulations will be coming back to us too. Thanks.
All right, thank you. 3C Fiber Committee Report. Mr. Walters.
I don't think any of the three of us were able to attend the Fiber Committee Report. I think the long and the short of it is that fiber continues to go well, and maybe the best news is that apparently we were awarded some, are you, do you want to brief us on that?
Yeah, you know, if you didn't get a good report, though, I wanted to steal the thunder. But no, I'll let, all the work, all the great work, I want to attribute the, the great work, Ms. Hsu. I'll let her take the, take the thunder on that one because it was her presentation to the, to the county commissioners. Go ahead, Ms. Hsu.
Mayor, council, and members of the audience, I'm very pleased to be able to let you know tonight that the city was successful in obtaining a $500,000 grant from Skagit County. It's through their economic development in public facilities. So it's actually funded through their distressed rural county sales and use tax. So that will help offset costs associated with our project in Gueimas View. That project is estimated to be a $3.8 million project, and the $500,000 equates to about 13% of the, the cost. So very pleased that will be coming forward to council as an inter-local agreement on the consent agenda next week. So everything is ready to, to move forward with that. And really, it's because I have a wonderful team that's, that's working with me. That includes the support of mayor and council. So thank you for, pleased to be able to share that news tonight.
That's really great news, and yeah, very excited about that one. And I think we're over 1,400 customers also.
As of today, yes.
Another, another happy number. All right, sorry to any other comments on the fiber report. Okay. I also, I don't know if there was a museum committee that met, maybe, nope, okay. I thought, I thought that might have happened, but, okay. We're on to item four, which is public comment, opportunity to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. This is your opportunity. And I don't have anybody signed up for that one. And no hands raised online. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
A move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Moulton to approve consent agenda items A and B. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to other business, item six. And I think Mr. Meesmer will introduce our guest speaker. And this is Anacortes Chamber of Commerce Update, discussion item. Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. As many of you know, every year, the chamber gives a presentation to the council, and, and I'm always looking forward to it because we learn so much about what they do for our community. With that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Jessica Kaiser with the Chamber of Commerce, CEO.
Hello. Thank you very much for having us today to present to you guys, and thank you to Dawn for being so great, whereas we needed to be flexible and get us through graduation. So my name is Jessica Kaiser. I'm the president and CEO of the Anacortes Chamber of Commerce. This is our team. So I'm on the top there. I've been in this role and lived in Anacortes for about a year now. And I have three kids at Anacortes High School this year, one just graduated, and two in college. Kristi Lyman is our tourism director. She has been at the chamber for about four years now. Kate Helmerich is our events and communications coordinator, who has been with us for under a year. And Bailey Wend is our newest hire as our administrative assistant, also under a year. The ladies on the bottom row, you might recognize from the licensing office. So Kristi has been with us for over 20 years. Cheryl Vanderpool is new with us for about a year, and Leah is brand new for under a year. So as you can see, we've got some newer folks there. And so we've really appreciated the help we've received from the city staff and some of you guys who've been able to share some history with us, and especially as we've been opening up all our meetings and events to the community. We're honored to have such a wide range of industry represented on our Board of Directors. We all meet monthly for our board meetings, and then we meet annually for our board retreat, where we set up our strategic planning for the next five years. Our mission at the chamber is to promote economic prosperity, number one. And how we do that is through innovative leadership, advocacy, and like today, collaborative community engagement. Now, most of you are familiar with what our chamber does, but for those online or in the audience, a Chamber of Commerce is a member-driven nonprofit organization. So we are a 501(c)(6), and how that is different from a 501(c)(3) is we are able to advocate. So because we're a nonprofit that supports for-profit industry, they do allow us to have limited advocacy. And that's the main difference. There's also some when it comes to filing the donation as a charitable contribution versus a business expense, but those are the main differences. So we are made up of businesses, professionals, community stakeholders, and all with the goal to provide leadership to Anacortes's businesses. We provide a plethora of services, networking, ways for them to promote and get referrals for their business, definitely creating educational programs for our members and the community, continuing to strengthen our partnerships and alliances, and engaging in the advocacy work. Right now, we're focusing on the Sydney to Anacortes ferry route. And then participating in economic development, which we're really looking forward to, working with Dawn and community members on the Economic Development Committee as needed. So we also have our three hats there on the right side. So the Chamber of Commerce, what we were just chatting about. And then we also have, the Department of Licensing is ran and managed by us, but the State Licensing Department is the oversight agency. And then our DMO, which is the Destination Marketing Organization, which we call Experience Anacortes DMO and Visitor Center. So that's also ran and managed by us, but the state RCWs dictate the direct oversight as it's grant-funded. One of the board strategies for this year was strengthening partnerships. So I have been meeting with all these inspiring leaders in our community on a regular basis. Some of the community nonprofits we've been working with recently are the Anacortes Arts Festival, Friends of the Forest, Friends of Skagit Beaches, and the list goes on. And we're hoping to keep that growing on the list. Then to wrap up about the chamber, I've found over the years that there are three main reasons that people join the chamber. One is to promote their business, typically the smaller businesses because it's about 80% of what we're made up of. Two is to network with their peers or community leaders, or three, to support small business because they're usually the larger organizations. They don't need promotion or marketing, they just want to support the community. And with this knowledge, we found that all three reasons are met with committee work. So we spread it out, and so more of the community can be a part of this great work. And now to share more about the Anacortes DMO, our tourism director, Kristi Lyman.
Hi. Do I need to stand closer?
Yeah, or move that, you can pull the mic down.
How's that?
That's a little better.
A little better? How about now?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
So thank you for having us. As Jessica mentioned, I'm the tourism director for the chamber. I'm, I manage the Experience Anacortes Destination Marketing Organization and the Visitor Information Center. My two main objectives are getting folks to come to Anacortes and then creating a welcoming experience once they get here. We have a tourism committee that I work very closely with, made up of 13 different people at this time, representing city staff, hoteliers, nonprofits, business leaders, and the Skagit Tourism Bureau. In 2020, we focused on strategic planning and reinvigorating our brand. Our previous brand logo didn't work for all types of media, and our studies showed that the majority of visitors that came to Anacortes came for outdoor recreation. So we wanted to include both the surrounding water and community forestlands in the new, updated logo. The five pillars of the Experience Anacortes marketing plan include strategic marketing placements, technology, distribution, storytelling, community events, and projects. I'm just going to share a little bit about each of those. Each year, we evaluate all of our media buys and make analytic-based decisions when planning for the following year. We increased media coverage and ad sizes in 2022 to keep Anacortes top of mind because all destinations are really battling to be right on top, so coming out of the pandemic. We are continuously diversifying our reach. So all of the yellow publications are ones that are new this year. So we're constantly reviewing and looking at all of the data. And some of these we have worked with in the past, but we've taken a break of more than two years. So that's why they're highlighted yellow. And this is one of the more exciting ones. In 2020, I met with the Anacortes Marine Trades Association to identify some of the better placements to advertise so that we could support the maritime strategic plan. And in the summer of 2021, a writer from Boat US Magazine, which is a high-profile boating magazine, it's a nationwide publication, contacted us and let me know that she saw our ads, came to Anacortes, and then Anacortes ended up being the number one boating destination for 2021. With the support of the City of Anacortes and with some carers funding, we launched our new website, anacortes.org, featuring free online directory listings, landing pages, and the opportunity to list products for sale for all businesses in Anacortes. So regardless of membership status, any business in Anacortes can go to our website, sign up right there under Business Sign Up, and have their stuff listed on our website the following day. Over the last five years, we've refined our audience, increased page views, and increased time spent on our website. The most significant thing that I can say about looking at our five-year overview is that for the first time in the five years, or that I could find in record of, staying in Anacortes was a top-five page that was viewed. Our Experience Anacortes newsletter goes out six times a year, including articles about Anacortes and things to do when you get here. This goes to nearly 25,000 email recipients and does not include the community events that we do. We do, I think we quarterly were doing that at this time. With wait times increasing for folks using the ferry system, we saw an opportunity to use geo fencing to place targeted ads about Anacortes within a two-mile radius of all island ferry terminals and cities with similar downtown areas. During tulip season, we increased the area to include Rusengard, Tulip Town, and the driving tour of the Blooming Fields. Oh, I left you guys a little envelope of some of the new things that we created this year. So we just finalized our updated Experience Anacortes brochure to be in line with the new brand. We are distributing 165,000 copies throughout 581 locations, all along the I-5 corridor and down to Portland. So that's, welcome centers, airports, hotels. We have our Experience Anacortes magazine, which is a digital publication. It has articles about Anacortes, videos, different facts about it. Of course, it's a more of a future planning tool rather than a for-here tool. We are offering postcards, stickers, and cleanings in the visitor center for folks who are in, or who came in and enjoyed their time, so we can increase our marketing reach through visitor to visitor. And so far this year, we've mailed 597 packets to people who have requested information about Anacortes. We are investing in photographs and media that tell stories about Anacortes, so potential visitors can really see themselves immersed in the things that are available to do while you're here. Most recently, we had King Five Evening Takeover, where we were able to showcase 14 businesses and events within the 22 minutes. Here are some of the events that I market throughout the year with the objective of getting people 50 miles away or further to visit Anacortes, spend money, and stay overnight to increase economic prosperity for the city. Other projects that we work on, or these are some of the community projects we do to enhance the visitor experience once folks get here. So we, the flower baskets you see hanging along Commercial Avenue are purchased from a local farm. And a special thank you to the city staff for helping us hang those and watering them throughout the year, or season, not year. We provide power for two of the pocket parks, specifically the Mary Lee Moore Sculpture and the Roundabout, and the Three Sales Sculpture that is on the ferry, in between the ferry and going to Washington Park. And some of our most recent events, we survey all of our attendees to find out more about how they spend their time once they get to Anacortes. Anacortes Uncorked is a one-day event. We strategically split the event in half, offering an afternoon ticket and an evening ticket, so that we could encourage more overnight stays and opportunities to explore the town before and after, and partnered with our hoteliers and restaurants to really push out the different things we could do. As you can see, we had 34 people, or 34% stay in paid accommodations, 40% went shopping, and based on the survey results, about 115,000 was spent in Anacortes by those attendees. We have the Anacortes Charm Walk, which is a new event we just tried in May. Any downtown business was able to host a charm for folks to collect as they built their bracelets by going from place to place. We had 6% stay in paid accommodations, 88% went shopping, and about $10,721 was spent due to that event. And then the Anacortes Boat and Yacht Show, our most recent event, we had just under 4,000 folks come in for that from 32 states. So we had five days featuring boating seminars, marine vendors, and of course, a lot of boats. But we had 40% stay in paid accommodations, 70% went shopping, and based on the results, we can say around 352,000 was spent in Anacortes, not including the sale of the boats. And for our Visitor Information Center, we have been upgrading, so we have new wall paint, we stained the shelves, we are going to be giving, it's very small updates, but it makes the space look a little bit newer. In 2019, we had about 14,000 visitors, and we were closed most of 2020 and part of 2021. But you can see that visitors are coming back as we move forward. We survey all guests who come into the Visitor Information Center, so we can obtain travel data and information about their stay. So we use this information to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our guests by providing as much information about the activities that they're interested in as possible. This is one of my more favorite things that we did. The volunteers, probably not as favorite for them, they're getting the hang of the new technology. But we have a kiosk. So we have a platform developed, so it looks just like the explorer page on our website, so people can come into the visitor center, they can look up the business directory, they can look up things to do. And the cool thing is, it's completely mobile, so we could take this anywhere, as long as there's Wi-Fi. During COVID, it's been challenging for restaurants to keep their menus up to date. So we replaced the menus with QR codes that link directly to the restaurant's menu on their website, ensuring that whatever they, whenever they make an update, we have the most up-to-date information available to anybody who comes in. And it also saved a lot of space on those shelves, if you could see the before and after. And that's it. Thank you so much for having us. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. I don't know if we're allowed to do that.
Yeah, thank, well, absolutely. This is open for discussion. Any, any members of the public, any questions? All right. Oh, yes, come on up. Yeah, yeah, come on up to the microphone. I think, Ms. Dow, you know how this works. You can.
Well, hi to you. I'm Andrea Dow from 1319 Eighth Street.
I just have a question for you. Have you ever surveyed people coming, asking if they wanted something more? They would have stayed longer if XYZ was present. Have you ever?
All right, yeah, make sure we can come to the, can you?
So I just wondered if they ever did a survey of people that came, and when they left either the hotel or something like that, might say to them, of your experience, what would you have liked to have had more? If you wanted, you know, would you want to stay longer? And if so, what would you like to see here?
Okay, yeah. Take a shot at that one.
So we don't currently have the ability to survey people who come to hotels. The only emails that we're able to get are from the folks who are coming into the Visitor Information Center, or they're attending one of our events. So we obtain all of those emails and survey all of those people. And we do ask them if there, if there were three improvements that you could say about your stay or that you were looking for, please let us know. And that's part of the process of us trying to find more brochures and information to put into the visitor center for when folks come back.
All right, council, questions? Mr. Walters.
Nice presentation. Some of the slides toward the end have a lot of percentages, and they'd be, I think, also helpful to have absolute numbers of respondents, so we could get a sense of what the end value is there. One of the pieces of the scope of work of the lodging tax contract that we have with you for the Visitor Information Center, about $75,000 a year, is the bathrooms in your building downtown. And I have gotten a couple of complaints recently that they're not open. Can you tell us how long they've been closed and when they might open again?
Yes, definitely. So recently, we did have some issues with some drug addicts finding ways to get in there because we had the lock set up, so it would automatically lock at 5:00 PM and then reopen at 9:00 AM. And when we'd get there in the morning, we found vandalism, cut pipes, drugs, and blood, and all sorts of stuff that was super unsafe for the community. So we did decide to close the bathrooms until we could kind of take a next step for safety. And after asking around and talking to the police a couple times, the best option was to install some higher-quality cameras and from several different angles, so that if we're able to catch the people that are breaking in, then we can trespass them. So the goal is to have them up and ready to reopen before the Fourth of July.
So that's pretty soon. Sorry, it's, sorry, go ahead.
And they'll be on the outside of them.
Yeah, no, I was going to clarify. Cameras are on the outside. I think we all knew that, but it was important to say that.
One other question. So, because we are looking at, at whatever it is, 12, 18 months out, losing the transit shed as a venue for events, has the chamber considered maybe a better option of refocusing some events in the downtown, maybe closing streets, maybe leaving the streets open, I don't know, but getting people into our downtown businesses for Wine Fest or Oktoberfest? I know other communities do that, and it seems to me that there is a real information gap between what our residents think they can buy downtown and what they actually can buy downtown. And so, any opportunity we can to force them into the shops so that they see what's available, I feel like would have a long-term, you know, whole-year positive impact on our downtown shops. I just wanted to, maybe you have a response, maybe not, but I just wanted to put in a plug for that.
Yeah. The loss of the transit shed is definitely something we talk about often, and our Events Committee is discussing on where we would like to attempt to have our events in the future. And kind of our goal over the next couple of months is visiting as many of the facilities as possible to see kind of what their capacity is and if they're open all the way, and then kind of come up with a plan of action for options. So, I agree that we want to try to keep it as close to shopping and eating as possible so that we're getting all the wins from our events.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
All right. No, just really, this is a compliment in many ways. Just looking over the last many months and having the pleasure to work with each of you on some different projects, and also meeting with Ms. Kaiser to talk about economic development, which is part of what's on the agenda tonight, and just sort of how and what might be things that we can do together as a beginning salvo into working together. And, you know, we had a great time, and it was a wonderful conversation, and I look forward to that. I just think that in seeding this collaboration of stakeholders for what we're hoping to do here in the city, and I felt confident that as a partnership of stakeholders, that we're on a great track. And so, excellent presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I wanted to say how good I think your branding looks, and I think that's really striking and very nice. And the QR codes, also great. Anything to save resources as well and keep things up to date. That's an excellent idea. I also love the postcards, and it's great to have them available. Do you also sell stamps, postcard stamps at the visitor's center? That might be a really good idea, because that's like a really hard thing to find sometimes. But anyway, I just wanted to say thanks for what you're doing. I think you're doing a great job.
And the next quiz is, how much is a postcard stamp anymore? I don't know.
Mayor Miller.
Any, Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. Question about the community event stats. So, looking at this, it looks like we've brought in almost a half million dollars for events. Which ones are you looking to do in the future, and do they include some of the smaller ones like the Christmas tree lighting? Is there any way to track those folks, since we have a sense that they're mostly locals, but it's always been kind of a challenge to find out who comes in, you know, to hang out for the holidays?
So, one of the things that we did last year was open the visitor center for folks that were coming to it and asking them where they were from. So, we had volunteers stationed there, giving out hot chocolate and cookies. And so, most of it was just through communication and talking, and we got a sense that a lot of it was locals, but a lot of people invited their families from outside of Anacortes to come and celebrate the new tree. I'm sorry, what was the first part of your question?
Just saying congratulations on bringing in almost a half million dollars and being able to track that from one data nerd to another data nerd. I love seeing all of this. But do second what Mr. Walters says, would love to be able to see some raw data and real numbers. That'd be great.
Absolutely. We don't showcase anything unless it's above 10%, but we've been getting really good results from the boat show analytics. We had almost 50% of people respond, and 17% for the uncorked, and 100% of people responded for Charm Walk.
Mayor Miller. I think it was a good point that you raised with the Boat and Yacht Show, that it does not reflect any sales tax from boats. As I know, the council is aware, top three sales tax generator, perennial sales tax generator is boat and yacht sales. So, hopefully we'll see those numbers soon. Mr. McDougal.
Just really quickly, I was also going to shower you with compliments. The new materials are terrific and love the focus on, the additional focus on technology as well, plus Wanda being a data nerd.
All right. Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah. Again, I really appreciated the presentation, because I think this is the information that we haven't had, the public hasn't had the opportunity to see, right, all of the outreach, because we live here, we may not be quite as aware. But it's, I mean, Anacortes looks beautiful in these photos. So, I really appreciate the imagery and the new logo and whatnot. I'm just curious, you know, do you have any new events on the horizon for the next couple of years, and any idea of how to keep the downtown open a little later and on Sunday?
I like the way you think. And yes, we are in discussion with a couple of partner nonprofits. I'm going to let them share the exciting news of the ideas, but yes, we are definitely raising our hand to help where we can bring new things in. And the second, what was the second part?
Sunday.
Sunday. So, that's a tricky one, because the biggest concern that I'm hearing from businesses right now is staffing. And so, to have additional hours and days is almost impossible for them, but it's definitely something we're still keeping the conversation going, because we do have ideas that we want to bring to them when they're ready to do that.
All right. Well, thank you very much to the Anacortes Chamber and your continued partnership with the city. Appreciate it.
Mayor, we do have one...
Oh, so, oh, wait. Okay, I got a late hand raise. Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay. Aloha, Council. I just wanted to ask the chamber, I see that they have DEI, you know, on their thing. What does DEI mean to the chamber, and how are they working to make Anacortes more diverse, equitable, and inclusive? Thank you.
Yes, thank you for noticing that. That is our newest committee, still being formed, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. One thing we really noticed when we were doing our storytelling is that it was a lot of the same people. And so, we want to diversify that, show the different ages, show the different races, show all the different people that are here. And so, with that, we wanted to reach out to some more of the businesses and get their input and ideas on how they would like to be highlighted as well. So, that's kind of where we're starting. But I've got a committee getting formed, about three or four members committed so far, and then we'll start the work of actually creating the purpose statement and the objectives.
Well, thank you again to the, okay, we got another one. All right. All right. Well, we'll eventually, it's a wonderful presentation, so there's lots of questions. So, we appreciate the comments.
Thank you for the presentation. It was great. I'm Mary Ellen West. I'm at 301 Sterling Drive. And I'm just curious, I didn't see anything about the Anacortes Farmers Market, which I think is one of our best community activities, and I'm hoping you promote that.
We do. I was trying to keep my slides down. I already had 19. And we do have a new feature on the website. It's our community events calendar. And so, myself, our admin assistant, and anybody who wants to add an event to it can. And so, we have the farmers market on there. We have them on our social media, and we forward their, they send us their list of who's going to be there on Fridays, and we try and get it out before the following Saturday.
All right. Again, so many great things to do that you can't list all of them, but please visit the chamber's website, which of course can link through the city of Anacortes' website. Okay. Well, thank you very much to the chamber. Moving on to item 6B, it's a contract award, pump station number eight, emergency relocation, construction management contract. Mr. McDaniel, this is you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. This evening, in front of us, we have, city staff is seeking city council consent to award a contract in the amount of $108,156.60 to Widener and Associates to perform the FEMA coordination, construction management, site inspection, and environmental compliance of sewer pump station number eight, emergency relocation. I can take questions if you have those.
Well, since I know counsel all read the contract, questions for counsel?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton, and then Mr. Walters.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. I know we spoke about this at the Public Works Committee meeting, and we gave a little preview last week here in my long report. But so, this is, this is not obviously the construction contract. This is everything related to, so...
That is correct. So, this is for the FEMA portion of the consulting side of that. The actual contract we awarded at the prior council meeting, and it was 300 and some thousand.
And this is the one that we are going to receive state and federal funding for 95% of the total of the entire project?
That's the intent, yes. And so, this consultant will guide us through that FEMA portion of that and ensure that we follow FEMA protocol. Great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, we did talk through it at the Public Works Committee, and I'm sure we'll move it forward here tonight. I would just point out that we let a lot of contracts with Widener and Associates. Surely, they're not the only game in town, but these type of contracts don't have to be bid out. I wonder if we could spread that workaround a little bit more in the future.
Yeah, I think that was a fair comment. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Young.
Well, short of any other comments, Mayor Miller, I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign contract 22-154 ENG 002 with Widener and Associates in the amount of $108,156.60 to perform the pump station number eight, emergency relocation, construction management.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Hubick, to award the contract for pump station number eight, emergency relocation, construction management. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please? Mr. Young? Yes. Mr. Walters? Yes. Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, thank you. On to item number 6C, which is Resolution 3092 Lodging Tax Award to the Anacortes Music Project. It's a discussion and possible action item. Mr. Meesmer, I'll let you go through your stack of papers, since you're up for the next three items. So, I'll let you, give you some time to get them stacked up in the right order.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and the audience. Resolution 3092 authorizes lodging tax funding in the amount of $25,520 for the Anacortes Music Project, or AMP, as most people know them. And it is for various music venues, marketing, and support items, including security restrooms for their music venues. The original request was for $36,520 and was reduced by postponing the website upgrade until next year, requesting more information by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and a scope of work, essentially. And then also was the show chime, reduced that by 50% to explore a better distribution package for the show time chime. And then, last year, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and City Council authorized a $10,500 allocation, and that was not used and will not be used, and therefore, the total for the allocation is $25,520. And the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee unanimously recommended approval to the council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters. So, I think I heard you just lay out what that 22,000 or 25,000 is going for, but where is that reduced to writing?
I'm sorry, one more time?
The resolution says, okay, we'll award 25,000. We'll rescind the previous 10. How do we know what we're approving the 25 for? Because if it were for the full amount, I assume that we would just attach their proposal to a lodging tax contract and...
Correct.
But we're only approving a partial amount. So, where will that?
Correct. And so, it does not specifically identify the items in the resolution that would be funded. It just recommends 25,520. We could certainly amend the resolution to identify the amounts per the requested items that they had laid out.
Mayor Miller. Go ahead. Mr. Walters, go ahead and finish your thought.
Well, or in the alternative, is there just going to be a lodging tax contract that calls out? I just don't want them to get a smaller amount of money for the same scope if what we actually intended was a reduced scope.
And Mr. Young, go ahead.
Being the Chair of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, I hear your question. One of the things that came before us in the meeting was a detailed description of what each of the monies would be used for. What we did in the committee was, there was a line item, let's say, for website update, you know, because we discussed the benefit of a website and the update and the costs associated with that. And then the question of whether or not that would be adequate for a complete overhaul, because the website itself would also be a place where people would go. But it may not be attached in this, but there was a full presentation to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, giving a line item by line item what the money would be used for. And I think that that's what you were asking about.
And Ms. Cleveland, I think.
I think it's in that AMP final application, right? It shows, it lists out the $5,000 for the website. I assume there's probably a couple of other things that go along with the website that's being pulled out till next year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. So, the website upgrade of $5,000 was left out of this one.
Okay.
And then 50% of the show chime, which we're requesting 12, went to 6,000, so that they could work on a better marketing strategy.
So, that's the $11,000 then. Okay.
Mr. Walters, and then Mr. Young.
And I have no particular problem or beef with this application. My point is largely that I don't really care what they spend the money on. What I care about is the deliverable that, so for instance, in this case, they have X number of events or concerts. That ought to be called out in our, in our contract with them. I don't care if they spend it on insurance or security. It's illustrative of what their costs are. I just don't, I don't think that we should be reimbursing them for those expenses. I think we should be reimbursing them for the deliverable of having the events. And it's a, it's a distinction with, I think, an important difference. It's not addressed by the resolution here, though. The resolution here just approves the award, and I'm happy to move approval of the resolution as presented.
Hearing Mr. Walters truly understand exactly the point that you're making, I just thought that it would be important to elaborate just a little bit. We truly did a hardcore analysis, and much of those answers that you're asking for was presented to the group. Now, I do agree, there were some issues of distribution, and again, the group itself addressed those. We addressed it with the project itself. Those are the things of deliverables, like you were mentioning, Mr. Walters, that are to be improved, and they're coming back with a plan of action to directly address those. You know, for example, it was just a question of some of the hotels receiving the publication, because they had people that would come for the stay, but then at the same time, they also wanted to be able to present them with a list of things that was taking place. So, those things were being addressed. And I hear you, Mr. Walters, and I think that the committee itself hears you very clearly, and so we will address those things going forward.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
To Mr. Walters, to Walter...
To Mr. Walters, to first to Mr. Young's point is, I totally support this, and I'm sure the committee went through all the proper steps for this. To Mr. Walters' point, I think not just for AMP, but for any organization that applies for and receives LTAC funding, I think it is important to call out the deliverables, as Mr. Walters said, because that really gives us an even set of expectations and results across the field.
All right. Anybody else? Any motions, perhaps? Oh, yeah, it almost sounded like a motion. I did feel like that was a motion.
Yeah, I agree with identifying those deliverables, just so that, you know, from year to year, our memories kind of fade, and it's nice to be able to itemize out what was funded and to make sure that that was successful, so when there's another request that we can follow up. But I would like to second Mr. Walters' motion.
Okay, I'm going to say that we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to approve Resolution three zero nine-two Lodging Tax Award to the Anacortes Music Project. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, on to item six D. It's a Resolution three zero nine-one, amending Resolution three zero seven zero to include an economic development committee and appointing city council members to the council committees and appointing council representatives for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three year. And then I will turn this over to Mr. Meesmer and Mayor Protem, but Mr. Meesmer, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council and the audience. In working with Mayor Protem, Councilmember Young, Resolution three zero nine-one establishes an economic development committee consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Policy, E D one point twelve. Committee members would include Councilmember Young, Councilmember Hubick, and Councilmember Cleland McGrath. The committee would meet monthly on the second Tuesdays, and I think that's going to be probably between eleven and twelve, but perhaps still to be worked out on the timing. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Young.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. One of the reasons for, as Mayor Protem, the decision to push forward an economic development committee was, quite honestly, you know, having served on the Economic Development Alliance Board for quite a while, hiring of the current president and CEO, which is a wonderful friend and great job, having also had a wonderful conversation with the chamber, the mayor. What we were looking at is other ways that we can impact Anacortes in a good way. Much of the work that we've been seeing happening, talking about housing, talking wages, talking about, you know, development holes, you know, for example, MJB Properties on the upper end of Anacortes. The port itself is doing part of their North Basin development, and then downtown, trying to figure out how do we coordinate those things together in a symbiotic relationship where we all benefit and we all work together. And so part of that was, we need—I felt we needed to focus just a little bit on what is in Anacortes' best interests, recognizing that in each of the committees we have, there's an economic component. Mr. Meesmer in the department is doing an extraordinary job with what they have, limited staff, but doing a great job. But just imagine what we could do if we could combine our thoughts focusing on Anacortes and the hoes of economics, the differences in housing and all those things. So we really needed to focus on Anacortes, and then look and see how we can work within that toward the county. And so, you know, being a B-school person and entrepreneur, that—those are the things that I look at. And so I met with the mayor about it, and we had a great conversation, met with some other people, and it just felt that it was a good time for us to take a look. The parameters of where we are, what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, the stakeholders are all a part of the future discussions that we're going to make. But we have to take this initial first step in order to see what works for us, what works for us well, does it continue in the way we want our fair city to continue operating, and just trying to make that happen. And so in the selection of council members, just like in each of the other stellar committees we have, it was a strategy behind it, and I believe that this committee itself, looking forward and working in tandem, will be something extraordinary, and I'm excited about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is something that certainly we've talked about for at least a few years now, and I think now it's an opportunity. So this is actually open for public comment. Any members of the public wish to address the council? Counsel? Oh, sorry. Yeah, please, come on up, sorry. Just your name and what city you live in.
My name is Joe Ariano, six-one-three-five, Anacortes. When this subject is brought up, which is, I think, really to begin to look at the future, and I'm sure that each of you have had many opportunities to look at Anacortes' future, but what—I know my wife and I discuss this a lot—is automobiles. And yes, automobiles do bring commerce, bring money into the city, but can there be some vision around where we're going to park these vehicles? And I'm not sure if I'm hearing that, or maybe it is in the works, but in terms of advancement of economics, somehow to become creative and to bring Anacortes into a place where maybe there's less car traffic, but they have a way to park their car, and maybe they have some kind of a transit? I grew up in a community called Monterey Park in California, and in the nineteen-sixties, late-sixties, they had the vision of bringing a trolley into town, and it was a gas-powered trolley at the time. But that trolley would keep going up and down the major thoroughfare of Monterey Park, which was a city similar to the size of Anacortes. And that was a really successful thing, because that way people could jump on the trolley and head into town, even if you lived outside of the main city proper, always had that opportunity to hop on the fare—the trolley. So I just imagine that, using so much empty space, can't we have public parking, reducing thoroughfare, traffic, but allowing it creatively to enhance the city's viability in that way? So that's just a small little aspect, but I wanted to share my thoughts and feelings.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other comments from the council?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I think that there's obviously a lot of potential in this idea, that in my view, there's lots of opportunity to improve the economy of Anacortes, especially through support for our existing businesses. Sometimes when we start talking about economic development, we start heading in this direction that lands us with Tethys. That, I think, doesn't really benefit Anacortes, and you've seen that elsewhere. For instance, in Seattle and now Bellevue, they've got Amazon, and they've got so many workers downtown, and there's a real economic benefit to that, but there's also a real economic cost, because they don't bring along the sufficient tax dollars to help pay for the streets and the impacts that come along with all the towers that they've got built downtown. It's just an example, it's not really a threat here, obviously, but it's an example of how, I think, we need to keep our community foremost in our mind when we talk about economic development, not economic development just for the sake of economic development, or so we can have a checkbox that we, you know, made some win by bringing some industry here. It ought to be bringing industry here that benefits our community, but also propping up, helping the businesses that are already here in our community, because if everybody here is strong, other people will want to locate here naturally and organically, and I think that's probably the best possible outcome.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Everybody who—Mr. Young signed up is happy to be on the committee?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
I would say one more thing to Mr. Walters' point. You make a tremendous point, and truly, that's what's taken heart. The benefit of having this committee, it allows us to strategically and surgically, if we would, attract businesses and industry that we want, but it also, like I use this word again tonight, my favorite word tonight is symbionic, okay, in case you didn't know. But, you know, the mayor and I have had some in-depth conversations about it, and much of this will be revealed as we move forward in some thoughts and pulling it together. But truly recognize the point that you make, Mr. Walters, as well as for the community. We totally understand that, and that is the one thing that we're also working very hard to protect. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland?
I would like to throw out the term, more of a holistic view of economic development. It's not just about adding jobs, but it's about the folks who are going to do the jobs and having the support in place, whether it's transit or it is connection between neighborhoods. To me, this is—goes hand in hand with the South Commercial, right? Figuring out a way that folks that live on the south side of town can walk or ride their bikes and not take a car. So it's not just about recruiting businesses from out of area or businesses that complement our existing work for—work or business environment, but to really figure out, you know, why are we having such a challenge finding folks to work in the evening times or on Sundays? And how do we bolster that so that we have a vibrant downtown and people want to walk a few blocks because it's there? So—and this kind of goes hand in hand, I think, with the next topic that Mr. Meesmer's going to discuss. But I'm excited also just doing some of the partnerships. I think it's—at times, city council is—there's a little too much distance from the chamber, from E-DASK, and we need to make sure that—and the school district, right, and Maritime Trades. I think this is a good opportunity to kind of loop council in when we're looking at where we're going as a community. So I just—I want people to know it's not just about adding a number of jobs, but also the quality of life for those folks that live and work here. And that's a really important thing that we want, to me at least, is that the folks who work here are able to have the opportunity to live here successfully. So with that, I would like—I move—where am I here? Am I here? Yes. Make a motion to approve Resolution three zero nine-one as presented.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Mr. McDougall to approve Resolution three zero nine-one. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. On to item number six E, R4 bonus heights concepts. This is a discussion item only tonight, so Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. I have a few slides for us this evening that will guide us through where we've been and some of the discussions we've previously had in the R4 zone building height question, and this is specifically rated to the bonus height and the allowance for a potential five-story building in the R4 use zone on the west side of Commercial Avenue. So we'll go ahead, get started. So in two thousand and nineteen, Ordinance thirty forty was a major code rewrite, and it included several options for a bonus height that would allow up to a five-story building. And this includes units that are not more than six hundred square foot and some affordable So this is kind of just context. I do have a better map I'll show you later on, but this does show the R4 use zones. And the bonus incentives themselves are under nineteen forty-two oh fifty and are relative to the R4, the C, and the Central Business District. And here you can see that there are two options, a small unit option where at least twenty-five percent of the units are no more than six hundred square feet, and then option two is the affordable units. That gets a little bit more complicated. We have had one building, Fidalgo Flats, that has been constructed using the twenty-five percent of no more than six hundred square feet. And then as far as the affordable units go, we've had two buildings, one that's under construction and another one that's been completed, and that's by the Anacortes Family Center, that have been have been brought forward under this—under these bonus incentives. So Ordinance thirty fifty-four in two thousand and nineteen established a moratorium. Resolution twenty-sixty-eight reformed that moratorium and created a work plan, and since the pandemic, the moratorium has been extended several times by Ordinance thirty sixty-nine, thirty seventy-six, thirty eighty-eight, thirty ninety-seven, and most recently, forty twenty, expiring in October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The moratorium will most likely need to be extended for an additional six months with a new work plan around October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The moratorium applies only to the R4 zone west of the commercial use zone, and the moratorium applies to AMC Section nineteen fifty forty-two C, which is the small units option, option Project timeline, this is what we're hoping for from staff to move forward with this. City council feedback on proposed concepts this evening that we would want to take to the Planning Commission in July, with public meetings on those concepts, and then Planning Commission, public meetings, public hearing, and recommendation to the city council. And sometime around that October, September timeframe, city council review and potential adoption of a recommended concept. So along with that same timeframe, we are working on a housing action plan that will help identify various areas where the city might be able to improve housing options for the residents in the community. And so I'm sure all of us remember the Anacortes Comprehensive Plan for two thousand and sixteen, and, you know, we're basically, you know, building towards that twenty thirty-six population projection, not necessarily building, but we know that we're growing, and we're going to be around twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three people. That's five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five plus two thousand, two hundred and sixty dwelling units. We just got our information from the Office of Fiscal Management that tells us our population is currently eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty. And so that's up about a hundred and thirty from last year.
Don, sorry, I think it's seventeen is seventeen eight eighty was the number.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry.
So two thousand and sixteen Comp Plan Update, Plan for Accommodated Anticipating Growth Within the City to Protect Surrounding Forests and Parklands and Minimizing Sprawl, Promote Housing densities and types in all price ranges to meet a range of housing needs and respond to changing needs and preferences with no maximum density in the R4, the Commercial and Central Business District. with No Maximum Density in the R4, Commercial and Central Business District. Encourage Infill on Vacant or Underutilized Land. Provide for the Development of Multifamily Housing in Areas Close to Shopping, Employment and Public Transportation, the R4, the Commercial and Central Business Districts. And so those are all items that have taken place in our development regulations that were just recently completed. And evaluate, excuse me, evaluate barriers to achieving increased density in multifamily mixed-use zones and revise regulations if appropriate. And again, that's one of the items that we have done, or rather, the council has done through the adoption of our most recent bill of regulations. We're also looking at that again through our Housing Action Plan process with Makers Architecture. These are just a few of the diverse housing options. So possible barriers, historic policies favoring single-family residential development, restrictive form and intensity standards, building costs, including parking, financial challenges, lack of incentive, basically it doesn't pencil. And then kind of just, oh, by the way, year-to-date issued permits from, for end of year, December 2021, 57 new single families, 29 apartments, 49 townhomes, 18 cottages, and 13 accessory dwelling units. And I'd really like to make note of, in the townhomes range, we haven't had that many townhomes for years, and the accessory dwelling units, that's starting to tick up. And so the changes in the development regulations over the past few years have made those possible.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Thank you for pointing these numbers out, Mr. Miesmer. I wanted to ask, prior to the adoption of the new regulations, essentially, single-family homes represented about 40, 41% of filings for 2021, meaning 60% were stuff that was not single-family home. Would you say prior to the new regulations, would that number have been flipped or even skewed further towards single-family home, like 80/20?
I would agree with that, Mr. McDougall, yes.
Closer to 80/20, I think?
Closer to 80/20.
Okay, so this is a significant shift.
Predominantly, single-family. Just 20, towards the end of 2020, 2021, and now beginning into 2022, we're starting to see more townhouses, more accessory dwelling units, and folks who are interested in doing duplexes and triplexes.
That's great.
And cottages.
Yes.
We have quite a few cottages that are in now.
That's great. Thank you.
So implementing the key Comp Plan and land use, housing goals and policies, again, changing to zone designations per the comprehensive plan, new standards for housing types. We now have a small lot criteria for single families, accessory dwelling units, cottages, townhouses, apartments, condominiums, with some of the regulatory measures on condos being lightened up a little bit, folks are now more interested in actually doing condominiums. Through the code, the council also worked in doing what is a unit subdivision, which allows people to do the cottage housing projects and actually subdivide those and sell them independently as a single-family residence. And in the past, that's not been possible without doing it in a condominium-type form. Parking code updates to bring requirements into alignment with actual parking demand needs, new affordable housing provisions and bonus incentives, which is why we're here this evening, is the bonus height. This gives you an example of the small lots. You can see there on the left-hand side of your screen, 4,500 square foot to 3,000 square foot lot. And we are actually seeing single-family residences on these 3,000 square foot slots that you will find as the old plats within Anacortes, particularly in the R4 use zone and in other areas. Then we have the multifamily building massing standards, very important in that we're not now seeing some of the old boxes that we used to see. We now have the standards that require open space and require some building articulation, especially in the front. We have provisions for ADU, there's maximum size, height, roof slope, design standards, maximum 900 square feet, retain the onsite owner occupancy requirement with new exceptions. So if we have a military person who is deployed, then there's an exception for that. We've also received a bit of feedback from folks that think that we should, the council should entertain the idea of getting away from the owner occupancy requirement. That's for a later date, not for tonight. Minimum parking requirements, the existing standards are unchanged with the exception that you can now use on-street parking for part of your requirement for that accessory dwelling unit. And the accessory dwelling unit is now allowed in any zone on any lot with a single-family So following the 2015 parking study, the new development regulations reduced the minimums for uses that often have underutilized parking, and the Central Business District, 50% less required, introduced maximums to avoid excess cost and wasted land, adjustments up or down allowed with a study in providing alternative transportation options such as car sharing or more bicycles. And there are new bike parking standards for multifamily and commercial buildings. And so some of these numbers might be a little off, but I just wanted to, you know, bounce through them for you. You know, land acquisition costs are, as you know, have gone up considerably these days. Public improvements, when we're looking at a multifamily building, it's entirely possible the developer would have to improve the street, alley, sidewalk, stormwater, and even upgrade water lines and sewer lines, which can be very expensive. In general, multi-story housing benefits from the economics of scale. So what we've heard from the developers is the taller the building, the cheaper it should be by the square foot. Up to about three floors, and then from there, it starts to get, I guess, better with those economics. And we'll have more on that as we continue through this process with the Planning Commission. Typically, elevators required by code at four levels, that's, you know, 100,000-plus. These days, I think it's probably double that. Plumbing increases from residential to a commercial license, electrical increases from residential to a commercial, so that typically means conduit instead of just typical wire. Significant foundation and subsoil site work may be needed. Materials, you're looking at having a, probably a crane to get the materials up to that fourth and fifth floor. And pretty much all the exterior work becomes more challenging when you get into, you know, four floors and five floors. And this is just a parking.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. Miesmer, all the factors on your last slide there make a lot of sense to me, and we spent quite a bit of time looking at those a couple of years ago when we first did this moratorium. However, in that time, we have seen some substantial four-story buildings go in in Burlington, close to Fred Meyer there. Do we have a theory as to why they pursued a four-story building there instead of a three or a five? Are you familiar with those?
Mr. Walters, I don't. I can reach out to the developer on that and get some insight.
I'd be very interested, because four-story or 40 feet was our height limit here for many years in the R4 zone, but we didn't really see that constructed. And I imagine that those factors on this previous slide played into that, but if it is happening in Burlington, I'd like to know how that might happen here.
Absolutely. We can reach out and figure out what's going on there. And, you know, these numbers are a little bit off, but it does give you a good example. Parking in Anacortes, of course, as you all know, land is very expensive, so if you're looking at surface parking, it can be, you know, very expensive, probably close to that $10,000, $12,000 for one stall. The above-grade structure even more, and of course, the below-grade structures, which we currently don't have any below-grade structures in Anacortes, and that could be, have a lot to do with our water table in Anacortes. And just some examples of the building with Chandler Square and the library, you know, Chandler Square, the clock tower is right around 50, Anacortes Family Center is 42 on the one building here, and then they're up to 49 on another one.
Mr. Walters.
On the Chandler Square clock tower there, isn't that in the R4 zone?
It is.
Was there an exception in our old code for the tower to exceed the 40-foot height limit?
There used to be a section in the code that allowed non-residential to go to 50 feet.
Okay.
So what and where is the R4 use zone? Here in this slide, we've just pointed out where that is. The R4 zone north of 20 Streck and his second has been R4 for several decades. The R4 zone south of 20 Streck Street are recently zone R4, changed from R3 and R4A So this is a little bit of history, talks about the area between 10th and 22nd has been designated the residential high density since at least 1978. And over time, the form and intensity standards and permitted uses have been adjusted. In 1994, permitted uses included single-family, multifamily, boarding, rooming, clinics, beauty salons, hospitals, mortuaries, offices, schools. And at that time, the maximum building heights ranged from 35 and 50 for non-residential space. In 2008, the use and the height standards were changed to remove offices and galleries, caregiver care, and assisted living, and the maximum building height was changed to 40 Now we have the concepts, and I have another slide deck that actually goes through these a little bit differently. And what would be, I think, benefit to staff is as we, maybe we just go through these one by one, and council could give me some head nods and say, yeah, let's take that one to the Planning Commission and the community for further conversation and reviews. Does that make sense to the council?
Counsel, I get some, so, you know, the objective is to maybe eliminate some of these concepts and to try to help out the Planning Commission and the community to narrow their focus as they make recommendations back to us.
That would be great. Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with number one, this is rezone that half-block between the Commercial Zone and O Avenue from R4 to Commercial. So what we're talking about there is mid-block, west of Commercial, it turns into R4. And so you've got this zone change right in the middle of the block. It's, it can be a little bit troublesome for folks that might have a lot that is split zone, or you're going to have Commercial and R4. I wasn't going to go through the advantages or disadvantages, you've got all those on your screen there. I mean, there are some, you know, disadvantages, of course, looking at it makes existing single-family residences and so forth perhaps non-conforming, but we could write that in there that those could be, of course, would stay and could be maintained for as long as they're standing.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Just want to make sure I'm clear. So the head nod is for it to go back to the Planning Commission just in public, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Young, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was nodding for the appropriate.
Yeah, there's a lot of work to still do here, and I think trying to, I mean, another thing would be, hey, if you see some advantages and disadvantages to maybe add to these or take away. But again, there's going to be opportunity for the public to comment on all of these for the next.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
October, you know, we're looking at an October target, I think.
Yeah. I'm expecting to bring this before the Planning Commissions many times in the upcoming months.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I would suggest that Mr. Miesmer run through these real quickly, the seven options here, and then that we open it to public comment, and then maybe we start our council discussion about them.
Sounds good.
Okay. So we have the Concept A, Concept B, modify applicability of the bonus height provisions to only apply to R4 study area east of O Avenue, so stop it right at east, right at O Avenue. Modify the applicability bonus height provisions to terminate at the east side of the N Avenue. Eliminate the bonus height provisions for the entire R4 study area. So when we say study area, we're talking about west of Commercial Avenue. The bonus height to mandatory, tie bonus height to mandatory affordable housing, rent control units, no small unit option. Do not allow roof decks on buildings over a certain height.
Mr. Walters.
Sorry, rent control is not allowed under state laws, we could probably strike those two words, but it's the mandatory affordable housing provision that's already in our code? Is that what that's about?
Yes.
Okay.
Do not allow rooftop, roof decks on buildings over a certain height, and we've not thought about what that height might be. Refine design standards to mitigate increased height impacts on streetscape and adjacent properties. And this would be, for instance, consider upper-story setbacks, maybe on all four sides or just on the street setback, where you might step the building in three or four feet so that it has some articulation as it goes up. And a couple more, leave the current bonus height provisions in place with no textual changes. Possible combinations of the concepts, for instance, change the half-block east of R4, east of O Avenue at Commercial, and limit the bonus height to the Commercial Use Zone. Just an idea, there could be other combinations. Explore maximum building height in relationship to existing buildings, five-story building, the Majestic, the hospital, not to exceed height of the highest building within a certain area. And now I have to admit, I have not taken the time to do a driveabout, check building heights, and actually explore what those subareas might be, but that could be an option as well. Bonus height provisions only apply to structures proposed in the focus area north of 22nd Street and perhaps east of O Avenue. And I'm sure others will probably come up as we begin more conversations with the Planning Commission and the City Council. So any questions before I step aside and the public can come up?
So, yeah, there's a lot of stuff there, and I'm trying to think how we can display all this information as we work through it, maybe go back to the previous slide, and then I'll open it up for public comment on anything, since I know that some members of the public wanted to comment on this one. Any members of the public want to comment on this? Again, there will be opportunities in the future, but anything that might help us narrow some of the options down for council. And just to clarify, the study area, we're talking about where the current moratorium is applied? Okay. I think to remind everybody. All right, well, council, you want to start taking a crack at this one? There's a lot in here, I realize that.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton, thank you.
Well, I'm going to start with a question. So could Mr. Miesmer now sort of address one at a time, and if we have questions about those, ask, and/or do a head nod as a result?
Yeah, sure, we can just go down A through L and see if we want to leave it on or if there's any, that's a good idea, or any comments on any of them. Starting with A, good with leaving that on there for now.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think that A ought to be considered in this public process. I think A should be coupled with a single-line code change that says that pre-existing single-family residences in that area would be considered conforming, not non-conforming, which is something we had done in the old code in various areas.
Any other comments on A? Okay, I can get some head nods with that adjustment. And, all right, how about?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So one of the consequences of A, however, is that you wouldn't have to apply for the bonus height provision in order to do a 50-foot-tall building. Do I have that right, Mr. Miesmer?
That's correct. And the Commercial Use Zone, 50. The commercial use on 50-foot.
Yeah. So then we would lose the benefit, assuming we agree there is one of the bonus height provision. But we would also benefit from a different boundary there.
Yeah, how can we clarify that? Maybe that's.
And another option, if I might, council, is, you know, even though, so you know, we could look at revising that and rezoning that half-block to commercial, and yet add another line that would require that they have smaller units or affordable housing. That's certainly an option. Keeping in mind that, you know, if we do do commercial there, it will open it up to other commercial ideas from folks.
Mr. Walters?
I don't think I would advocate that course simply because it starts to make the zoning code too complicated to understand and administer, but I tend to, I am glad that I am not up against a Starbucks. And for other commercial uses to move in on a block that is split in half, commercial and residential, I think invites conflict. And the purpose of zoning is supposed to be to avoid that conflict. So that's one of the reasons I think we should consider this change in the zoning boundary.
Yeah, and I think the disadvantage, you highlight the disadvantage that's in there, the commercial impact. But I think we're good leaving it in there. It's not so outrageous that we shouldn't push it on to the planning commission.
Very well. Item number B, modify applicability of the bonus height provisions to only apply to R4 study area east of O Avenue. Should we leave that in for discussion at planning commission and the community?
Yeah, okay. Ms. Moulton, comment?
Mayor Miller?
Well, I guess that is not one that I would like to leave in myself.
Mr. Young?
I would. And, you know, I just think it's important that when we review what we've done and what we really want it to be, I just think that we have to put it on the table again to see where and what that is. The thing I don't want to happen with, just for the families that don't want it, but then, you know, just where we are in commercial space with the city that's growing, we don't want to hamper that, too. So we've got to try to have the best of both. And I just think that that's a discussionary item that should be explored and then vetted, and then we'll decide what we're going to do and stick with it.
So maybe to make this a little more efficient, because it's certainly not a final vote, maybe there's a disadvantage you want to add to item B, Ms. Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. The disadvantage I see is that it unduly affects the people to the east side of Commercial Avenue without giving, they haven't had a five-story building go up in their neighborhood, so are we going to fight that? Are we going to go down that road with the people on the east? I think it disproportionately affects them without having any of them have an ability to have a say. So I think that I would like to keep, take B off the table for that reason.
Yeah, and this is where I'll, you know, when you think about moving east, remind the council that we do have an MMU zone that has an even higher level. So just something to keep in mind as we're going forward. I get pilloried all the time about that, but that is what our, that is what our code says. There's going to be buildings coming to the east of Anacortes. Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's always hard to look at this. This is a great grid of options, but it's also kind of nice to see the zoning map at the same time. To, I would tend to agree with Ms. Moulton in the sense that if our goal is to get folks out of cars because we know our population is increasing, the proximity to that downtown commercial core, whether it's restaurants, whether it's the grocery store, is, it's the same distance on the west side of commercial as it is on the east side of commercial. If anything, it's a little bit closer to that downtown core and those drugstores and whatnot. So I, I mean, I really think that that B should be taken off the table because it's an easy out since we haven't heard from those folks who live on the east side. There is a reason that that is, both sides are R4 zone. It doesn't, I think there's, as we go down that list, there is some modifications to transition much more effectively and smoothly to the R3 zone that I think we can discuss. But I am not, I'm not comfortable just taking it off the table completely when it comes to the west side of Commercial.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, first of all, I think B, C, D, E, and I, no, H, are all about the bonus height provision. And so I think it would be useful to put, group them together and just list them very parallel so that we can evaluate them. So B is stop the bonus height at O Avenue, C is stop the bonus height at N Avenue. Then we've got one about just leave bonus height alone, you know, no change scenario. I think it'd be helpful to consider those together. I believe that we need density in our downtown core. I believe that we need height as the most efficient way to get more housing and to get more affordable housing. And by affordable housing, because I think that we should probably avoid using that term because it has so many messages or meanings, what I think we mean by that is housing that is within those income ranges of, that is affordable, meaning 30% of your income, to people that are making the median income in the community. Originally wrote this moratorium, though, because I don't think that we should have 50-foot buildings on M Avenue, full stop. And that's what would have been allowed under our current code without the moratorium. Now, if council agrees with that proposition, then the question is, where do you draw the line between M Avenue and Commercial Avenue? And I think O Avenue is a logical location, especially if we're considering putting that half-block into the commercial zone. I don't think we should eliminate it from consideration, but it would be useful, I think, to mash these options together. So then it's just a matter of line drawing. I don't want to put out options for consideration that we have no, that we don't think are possibly reasonable, but drawing the line at O Avenue is something, at 40 feet east of O Avenue is what we, what we had prior to our new development regulations.
So are we thinking grouping B, C, D, E, and H together?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal?
Perhaps just from a visibility standpoint, like the next time this comes around, I think is maybe what he's saying as far as grouping, here's the bonus height section. And I think what I'm also hearing is maybe B and C are both probably worth at least going on to the next sort of phase in this process. Because I hear there's, you know, there's some disagreement on whether it should be O or N, but there's also advocates for. So rather than eliminate either B or C, probably let them both go forward for now.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. You know, unless there's unanimity of just getting rid of it, it probably ought to just be there to have the discussion. Again, this is far from the final, final vote. So we should probably lean to have the options there for at least the planning commission and the public to look at. But some way to organize it better with the bonus height, I think, would be helpful.
Very well.
Mr. Young?
Our truth is still the same. We have a shortage of housing that we desperately are trying to figure out how we address that. Lack of a better word, Mr. Walters, affordable housing is a huge discussion, that we have a committee working incredibly hard to help find solutions to those things. Height is not going to make everybody happy. I know it's not. And we're going to try to do that. But sometimes those tough decisions about where, when, and how are just what we're going to have to wrestle with and give it our best shot. And so, you know, I guess I just really wanted to say that, and I agree, because the points that Ms. Moulton, this Cleveland McGrath makes is absolutely true. But again, the other points of not putting any, taking anything off the table is also true, so that we can evaluate what's in our collective best interest and try to find a way forward.
So before I, I, we move on, are we all in agreement of collectively moving the bonus height provisions into one area? Did you capture enough info to do that and move that to the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Could we do, could we address D separately just for the moment? Because that says eliminate bonus height provisions for entire area. Is anyone on council, it's maybe not my place to ask, but that's one I would like to eliminate.
Mr. Walters?
When we say R4 study area, Mr. Meesmer, you're talking about R4 east of O or Commercial Avenue, right? So this would eliminate the small unit bonus height provisions or all of the bonus height provisions? Remember, the other two are the, or the other option is the low-income housing.
Yeah, of course, optionally. I mean, we could, we could look at, okay, maybe only allowing, and that's one of those here, only allowing the bonus height provisions if they provide the affordable housing unit option instead of the 600-square-foot units. I do have a couple of maps.
So the difference, I guess, between D and B is that half-block, isn't it?
Right.
I think that that's, so it's another instance of just the line drawing, I think.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Just to make sure I'm following your thought, Ms. Moulton. What you're saying about item D is eliminate, you wanted to take that off the table, basically, to the thought of eliminating that height provision in the R4 zone. I'm going from memory, Mr. Meesmer worked with me.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah, Ms. Moulton, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Meesmer, the language and the concept made me, it looks at first reading that it's eliminating all the bonus height provisions for the, when you say the entire R4 study area, I guess we're talking about the west side of Commercial, but it makes it seem like potentially the east side is lumped in, too. So I, I just, now I'm not sure what to say, sorry.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, so I think this is an example of how we would benefit from reorganizing these a little bit so that we could see them parallel. But I think I understand that option as basically stopping bonus height at that half-block. The next one is stopping but the bonus height option at O. The next one is stopping the bonus height option at N. And.
I have put a map, zoning map up that shows the R4 use zone, and will help us more clearly understand. For instance, option B, height provisions to only apply to R4 study area east of O Avenue. And of course, you know, here's O Avenue. And so that takes up that half a block that's sewn to R4 next to the commercial zone. The other one talks about modify applicability of the bonus height provisions to terminate at the east side of N Avenue. So here.
Yeah, so I think reconstituting these, so it just makes it clear, draw the line here, draw the line here, draw the line there, would be easier to follow. I think I would also be okay with eliminating this as an option because of my strong feeling that we need, we need, if we're going to have height in Anacortes, well, first of all, we're going to have it in the MMU zone, but we also need to have height on Commercial Avenue. And I consider that back half of the block between Commercial and O more appropriate than most other places in town for that height.
Another map, so this concept A, we've already talked about this a little bit, and this talks about rezoning the half a block to Commercial, shows it here. This also shows some of the potential heights within the MMU, the Commercial, the CM2, further to the east. And so, you know, the marine mixed use, 35-foot to 65-foot, Commercial 40 to 50, R4 40 to 50 as well. Concept B, this is more clearly helps you understand the, only apply to R4 area east of O Avenue. So again, this is this area here.
Yes, the maps definitely help, by the way.
Thank you. I apologize for not bringing those up earlier. So, and here, remove from bonus height eligibility, the area from M Avenue to N Avenue, and that's concept C. So it makes that quite a bit easier to understand there, I think. Concept D, eliminate the bonus height provisions for the entire R4 zone west of Commercial. So that includes this entire zone at the half a block between Commercial Avenue and O Avenue, Commercial Zone, R4 Zone. Concept E, talks about, and I'll get rid of the rent control unit idea here, it talks about you mandatory affordable housing as the only option for you to get that bonus Concept F, not allowing roof decks on buildings over a certain height. And concept G is examples of having step backs in the building to create, you know, some actual building texture, I'm going to call it. You know, for instance, here, if you have an eight-foot minimum step back, then those upper floors move back. The building doesn't look so boxy, it's got more character, I'm going to say. I haven't heard from builders on this as yet. Another idea is increase side yard setbacks, something similar to what we did from Old Town to Central Business District in the building height and the slope of the roof. And unfortunately, I'm afraid, I did not put slides together for the last four, although I think those probably are a little bit easier to understand, so.
So I guess maybe at this point, is there something that's so egregious as a concept that the entire council would not want the planning commission to look at? And did I mention the entire council? That you would not want the planning commission or the public to see? So that's, I know that's a really high bar, but.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah, Mr. Walters?
Well, and I think maybe the bar is not just not to see, but to get distracted by as well. So for instance, these side setback concepts, I think, are useful when the building height is not very high to begin with. But I actually was just reading an article about how this facade articulation requirement can make it more expensive to build taller buildings, especially taller buildings made of wood, including cross-laminated timber, which helps embody carbon. It may require you to move to steel, which means you're spending carbon. I think they also don't, at this height, really make anybody that happy. So I actually think I would, would strike these building articulation options unless they are, I don't know, substantially more involved than this.
Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, so I mean, going back to when we talked about the building articulation and the step backs, I think that that came out of a discussion of, you know, if we do this bonus height incentive all the way to M Avenue, how do we mitigate that really hard transition from R4 with bonus height incentive to an R3 zone? But what, at least from what we discussed in kind of our planning committee, I feel like. like we want, or at least my intention is to kind of simplify where those transitions can happen. And to me, it's those blocks. So when you start to see a height transition, it's on a street. So that gives some buffer. It also gives clarity to potential builders, to existing property owners, to potential property owners buying a new house, that, hey, between this street east, you know, this block between M and N or N and O, like, here's the worst case scenario, not worst case scenario, but most extreme scenario. As we all know, it's incredibly difficult to piece together a number of homes or buildings, or individual parcels to build some of these larger, larger multifamily units. And realistically, I, we're going there. What we need to do is do it thoughtfully. And so to me, it's, I hope that the planning commissioners walk these streets up and down to get a sense of what exists and what their potential is, because we don't want to negatively impact the folks that live there, but we also have to plan for the future. And I, and I want to be really careful that while we talk about affordable housing as a certain percentage of AMI, there are a number of folks who make more than average median income and cannot afford to live here. So I really think those smaller units are incredibly important at market rate to continue to have as an option. Where those go, I think we've got to give, we have to be really clear about it and define it, but we also can't get too hung up on the small little details, shouldn't say small little details, such as those, the step up, the step backs, because all of a sudden, it doesn't pencil. What we need to do is say, here's where you can do it, here's where you can't do it, and how do we transition? To me, it's, you know, clearing up that Commercial, then going to a block that has the option for a bonus height incentive, and then going to a block that doesn't have that option, right? So we step down 10 feet at a time, and it's clear for any, for everyone moving forward where, what things can be built where. I, I am very, very concerned that we are pricing our community out of this area. It is not just about those folks that are in the service industry. It's about the folks who have graduated high school here and want to come back after graduating college or going to a trade school and wanting to get a job here. But it's also our population that is retiring or is losing a spouse and goes to, from a two-income household to a one-income household, and staying in the community in which they've been invested in for a number of years. So while it's good to talk about the AMI, and we do need to have subsidized units such as the Family Center and the Housing Authority, we also need market rate units that don't currently exist. So whatever we can do to kind of clean it up and make it really clear that here's the blocks where, and this is what can happen, so that people can visualize it. But I really, really hope that planning commission is be able to walk those blocks, because I think that that's insightful when you see Chandler Square and you see the Zip Zap Pro Loop, right? There are some areas that kind of make sense, like Starbucks. I mean, that's, that's a drive-through. If you're going to have a five-story building, putting it next to the Starbucks and what once used to be Taco Bell, kind of makes sense there in proximity to social, the services that are there. And we've got to try to get those cars off the road and get folks kind of in our downtown.
And encouraging folks to take a look at those areas, probably decision makers to look at that, and look at Fidalgo Flats, and I think it's 90% occupied now, something, something like that, so, or, you know, it's, it's a need that's being fulfilled.
If I may, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
The commissioners have asked for, I'll call it a driveabout, they'd like to see some of the activity that's been going on with the townhouses and cottage development and Fidalgo Flats. And so we've also talked about for this, you know, for this discussion with the commissioners to have a nice walkabout through the R4 use zone, so they can have more contextual ideas of what's going on there. And ideally, I think that staff could move forward with, to the planning commission with these concepts as they are, and then come back to council with the commissioners' recommendations, along with, you know, a good outline of advantages, disadvantages, and what should be implemented and what shouldn't. And we would be able then to have that conversation, not only with the community, but with those developers who are interested in trying to put together a five-story building.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
To your point, Mr. Meesmer, I really think that that driveabout or drive-through would not only benefit the planning commission, I honestly think it would benefit council, because, you know, even in whatever comes out of the planning commission as a recommendation, that contextual clarity too, I think, would benefit council. And it will allow us to extrapolate from what is being presented and then help us make the determination. And I can speak for me, I would love that. Thank you.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. I would like to see concept F thrown out. I think that green space is important, community space is important. We've seen our residents and our guests flock to our new pocket parks and our outdoor spaces around restaurants and retail establishments.
Get a unanimous head nod on that one, maybe?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'm not sure that I would advocate for option F, but I did hear a lot of people from the community ask for option F at the time that Fidalgo Flats was being proposed. So I tend to think that we should leave it in there for consideration. The, I think I agree 80% with Ms. Cleveland McGrath. I don't, I don't see, I don't think we see anyone other than, say, the Family Center or potentially in the future, the Housing Authority, making use of the affordability criteria for the bonus height, which is why we developed the small unit criteria for bonus height. And absent some much more aggressive approach, like requiring affordable housing, income limited housing, which is maybe the more exact name, I don't, I don't see people using that. But maybe we should consider a more aggressive approach, such as requiring the small unit threshold of whatever the number is. Right now, it's 25% in order to get the bonus. Maybe we should allow or require 25% in some areas. I'm not sure which areas those would be. I agree we need housing, we absolutely need housing. I agree we are pricing people out of the market. When I, when I talk about AMI, I'm talking about market rate, because we have to achieve market rate housing, because we just can't subsidize enough of it. And we are so far behind. We have so far to go in order to have people who already work here be able to afford to live here, let alone all the people Anthony wants to bring into town to work here, be able to afford to live here. But also, I, I think that Fidalgo Flats next to the house that's just to the north of it is, it's crazy for the house that's to the north of it. Now, I would still draw the line at O Avenue, because we have to put this height and this density somewhere, and that's the logical place for it. But I don't think we have to put it on M Avenue, and I don't think we have to put it on even N Avenue. And maybe we move forward almost all the rest of these concepts for public comment, but we also attach that to some analysis of how many buildings can be built on the other side of Commercial, the west side of Commercial Avenue, which is starting to be more downslope and more in need of redevelopment. On the, on the west side of O Avenue, people have redeveloped their neighborhood, they have invested a lot of money in their neighborhoods there. And I think that that makes a difference, and I think that that is a logical, rational basis on which we can draw the line and say that we're allowing for the bonus height east of Commercial, but not for west.
Mayor Miller, a point of clarity. Mr. Young.
Thank you. You know, I am, just for the record, when I first got here, I was telling everybody about our town. After I got here, I became a little bit more conservative, because I love what we have. So, you know, I just wanted to make the point in a little tongue-in-cheek with Mr. Walters, that my priority in attracting people that are already coming here, but to also create a space where people that live here right now can have the best options on the table for them to enjoy the quality of life. That is the first priority. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
One point about the affordable, the affordable housing bonus height, I think that there are opportunities in the future for public-private partnerships. Perhaps the Housing Authority could partner with a developer and make that happen. So I'd really like to see that continue to be an option. The other, oh my gosh, what was the other thing I wanted to say? Oh, it's about the maps. I think they're great. I would love to see the next round of maps highlight the area we're talking about allowing it, rather than the area that we're removing it, potentially removing it from, because I think it's easier for the brain to, it's more intuitive, thank you, Mr. McDougal, to visualize and picture that.
Yeah.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, I think Ms. Moulton makes a really good point about being sure to continue to allow that, the affordable housing, I guess, incentive. As far as this list, and if we were to eliminate any of them, because it sounds like we're keeping most of them, at least for, you know, the next phase, would we potentially eliminate D and E, where E is actually like mandatory affordable housing provision? Any reason to not eliminate either of those? Sorry for the double negative.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Mayor, I would, I would advocate for eliminating E.
All right. All right, well, so I got advocacy for eliminating E. How about a universal head nods on that one? I'm seeing some head shaking.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
But I, but I.
Hold on, hold on, let's wait till we're, I, sorry, I went to a parliamentary training, so everybody gets to speak in turn. Ms. Cleveland, please.
Yeah, so I agree with E, but I also agree with Mr. McDougal about eliminating D.
Okay, let's make sure I got head nods on the E for Mr. Meesmer. I've got those. How about D? All right, no, okay, so not, not everybody wants to get rid of D, but everybody's good with E. Mr. Walters, you good with E, eliminating E, or Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I'm good with eliminating E. The reason I'm good with eliminating E, which I think is important, is it's illusory. If you allowed it for the income limited units, you just wouldn't get any.
Okay, so I think we're kind of at the point where we've bring, we work all of these to the planning commission and see what we get. And again, continue, please, I encourage members of the public to weigh in, council, provide additional comments for where we can help with clarity before it goes to council. I think the maps and putting the concepts next to the map like we've got here will be helpful.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I didn't hear anyone opposed to getting rid of G. I don't know if we want to try striking that one. I also want to simply plug the idea of making space for additional concepts, L here on our list, because others will have other ideas. Former council member Richardson sent us an email this afternoon suggesting that simply the building height could be allowed if the size were smaller. I don't, I don't think that that would work, because I don't think it would pencil either. But, you know, other concepts like that, I think, we should allow for public comment to, to make those concepts, and then the planning commission could recommend them, even if they're not in the initial draft.
Yeah, I'm certainly not keeping the good idea factory open, because we probably haven't thought of them all.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I was looking at J, explore maximum building height in relationship to existing buildings, a five-story building. I would like to eliminate that one from consideration. I don't think that it's relevant to base our future on what is just already existing.
I think the thought, the thought process there was taking a look at the slope of how the, how the community is, and that may have come from somebody I know, thinking of where I grew up outside of Washington DC, where if you're trying to maintain scale of a community, well, okay, what's the prominent building in town? It's the Capitol Building, so you don't build anything taller than that, so. Because I'm hearing a lot of feedback that people don't want to change the scale of the community, so pick something. But that was the idea there, but again, it's council's prerogative to decide what they want on here.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I, I think that we are doing that. I don't, I don't, just don't think we need to list it as a separate concept, so I'd be okay with doing that.
I think we got a unanimous head nod on that one, too. So I got J helping you out, Mr. Meesmer, J and E off the list. And maybe G, but I don't think I got a unanimous head nod on G. Okay. Also, K, any interest in removing K from the, Mr. Walters?
It would be helpful.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, I apologize. It would be, it's kind of hard to keep up with the letters of the numbers as I'm trying to roll through.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's just would be helpful, I think, what, and I know Mr. Meesmer has just really been scrolling, that finger should be tired in some ways, but, from scrolling, but, and I think, so what was the last proposal? Someone was saying item K?
Item K, which is bonus height provisions only apply to structures proposed in the focus area north of 22nd Street and east of O Avenue. And I think that was, if you compare, if you take a look at Fidalgo Flats now and you take a look at the hospital, perhaps you're, you know, maintaining that height scale is the idea there.
And so the thought was to eliminate that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm looking for elimination head nods. But I don't think I'm really getting enough to say, strike it off the list.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So I'd like to advocate for striking that one. I think that when people see the options for the line drawing exercise, they should feel free to draw whatever other lines that they prefer and push that forward as public comment. I don't think that this one has an obvious connection to our objectives, and it's kind of odd. We don't have a map drawing of it, but it would be north of 22nd, east of O, so it would just, it would just carve out a pretty small area, plus, plus the east of O, which is already one of the alternatives. I think it just confuses things.
Yeah, and I think you can capture everything else in L. Again, I think the natural contour lines were probably part of that idea. So we can strike that one. I got head nods. Okay. All right, I think it made your job slightly easier. This, this is going to be a challenge for council to come up with the right answer here. Again, we knew when we did the comprehensive plan, we rewrote Title 19, we were going to have adjustments to make, and there's some work ahead of us, and keep working on it. Any other questions, comments? All right. With no further business on the agenda, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.